Also in support of Father Mills. Today, the eighth grade and sophomore classes concluded their second and final session of Math MCAS for the year. Tomorrow, A World of Difference will be holding its end of the year banquet, which will be for current leaders and potential ones going into the next school year. Mrs. Tucker already covered it. I have to talk on the divide.
I need to steal your.
Good luck.
That was so fun.
So that's your thing. And then seniors' last day is Friday. And finally, on the middle school and high school student councils are planning Community Day for Friday, June 10th. To celebrate Duxbury and recognize the people who play a role in making a great community. And that's all I got.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
And I'll just add, Matt and I went to, there was an art show this week at the high school, and it's just incredible what our students produce. So it was a lot of fun to be there, and breadboards supplied the snap, so they ate a lot of cheese. Much appreciated.
I didn't have any cheese, but the art was really nice. It's awesome. Great. So I just have a few items. One is that, just general comments, we're in the homestretch. We have one more school committee meeting after this one. And you said seniors' last day is tomorrow?
Friday.
Friday. But we're in the, we're in the last month. It's gone by really, really fast, but my guess is that everybody on staff has been working super, super hard to, among other things, just try to get us back to normal. So thank you for all the work that you guys do and have been doing. We appreciate it. Graduation is what date?
June 4th.
June 4th. Okay. So I got an email for a gown?
Yep.
Did everyone get the gown email?
Yep.
Okay. All right, good. So gowns, that'll be fun. So typically, we do school committees involvement, and Kelly, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We do, one person does a speech.
The chair.
A chair. Well, you did it last time, and you weren't the chair. So that's, so that's, so that's on record. The chair does not have to do the speech.
You're right.
Okay. And then another, does another member hand out the diplomas or no? Is that like standard operating procedure?
Usually the chair hands out. I think because Molly was graduating.
Before we start centering on the chair, you know, so it's a.
Matt is your job.
So a school committee member gives a speech, and a school committee member does the how do you do the follow up.
Usually it's the chair does both. It always has been, except for me.
So you're saying the chair.
Because my daughter was graduating.
So I'm all about inclusiveness.
It's yeah. It's whatever you want to do.
Would anyone care to do the speech to Katie? You're vigorously nodding. No, you don't want to do that? Oh, we already talked about it.
If you don't want to do it, and you need someone to do it, I would do it. But I feel like it should be the chair.
Ah! So how about this? What if we, to spread the responsibility, what if I did the speech, and someone else handed out the diplomas?
I'll do the diplomas.
Would you like to do the diploma?
I'd love to do the diplomas.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
All right. That's democracy in action. Awesome. All right. So I'll do the speech. You'll do the diplomas. All right. Thank you very much. Great. Superintendent evaluations. Just so, the reason why I want to bring that up is, first of all, it's important. Between now and the next meeting, Dr. Klingman is going to be giving the school committee some files that will help inform the evaluations that we give her. So that will be familiar to you and to me and to you from, from last year. The reason why I bring it up is it's yet another ask that I have to make between this meeting and next meeting, where you get an email from me saying, like, Katie, write some stuff up and send it to me. But that's not going to be forever. It's just, you know, we're in this back half of the, of the year, and there's a lot of that type of, of work to do. But it's really critical. It's really important. I don't know if it's my place to say, but we did talk about it in the workshop, I think, a month ago. The way it works is that the evaluations happen right around the time we reorganize, and sometimes that involves brand new school committee members. And so, I mean, you have experience with it from last year. I don't know if there's anything that you want to add, but, you know, I think that you had mentioned, you don't really have like a full, clear picture because you're new and.
So I just based mine on what I, my interaction with previous superintendent since I was on board. And then I feel like maybe I, that's what I pretty much did. I feel like I tried to stick with that. And just some feedback that I thought would be beneficial going forward from experience through years as a parent, as a parent. But, yeah. But very, I mean, objective. So.
Good. All right. Great. So I'll be.
And we're here to help. I think that's the biggest thing. Like, we're here to help. And Kelly, you're great resources. I'm still a newbie, but I'm happy to help in any way. So I'm only, I'm only a year. I'm still, you know, finishing up my one year.
How long have you applied that card? It's been over a year.
I had, well, I guess, anyway. I'm happy to help in any way.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you. Okay, so liaisons, we, we went through the choosing, we chose them in the last meeting, really excited about that. I would just suggest that at the end of every chair report, I think I've been just sort of opening up the conversation, see if anyone has anything to add. I'll continue to do that, and it might be a good place if, you know, if anything has come up between meetings around any liaison stuff, it might be a good place to sort of, you know, put that if you wanted to. I'll say that I, I had a really energizing meeting with three folks from the DEI last week. And, you know, we didn't solve all the world's problems, but we got to know each other. And one of the things that sort of, you know, came up from that is it might be helpful for us to consider having them either do an in-person or even an imprint, like quarterly update, on what they're working on, you know, what initiatives they're doing to help raise money and, and stuff like that. And it gives us, I think, an opportunity to amplify the good work that they're doing versus just the annual, give us the check, which we don't want to go away. We still want the check, but we'd be good to sort of amplify the work that they're doing. And then lastly, Kelly mentioned the art show. It really was great. What I thought was like the best was how I found out about the art show. We had a meeting, and I was on my way out, and there was this awesome custodian, Scott, who recognized me. He's like, you should go to the art show. It's right up there. And so I ended up talking to him, and it really struck me that their work is nonstop. And when school ends, they have to do these really, really ambitious projects. He doesn't personally know exactly what is on the list yet, but he said last year they were stripping chemicals off walls, off of floors, and just doing a ton of work. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, people knew and recognized the work that our great custodians do. And he's Kate Fennosbro. So second, second meeting where Kate Fennos gets a shout out.
I like that.
Yeah. Yeah. Great. So I'm satisfied. Anything else?
Well, speaking of liaisons, Kristen and I attended the, it was our first DEI meeting. And for me, it was interesting because I didn't really know what the DEI committee did, so people were going to ask me. I didn't. So I spent, I, I wanted to be a silent observer, and then we had to participate in something, so it, it was great. And, you know, it was more about Caitlin and Shan was it's explained how they really took their time this first year to take it slow and gather information, not just like jump right in. So it'll be sustainable. And just how it's highlighting what, really what happens in the school. And for me, as a former teacher, like, you know, the number one thing for kids in order to be successful in a classroom is they have to feel comfortable. They have to feel safe. And so I was happy to hear that a lot of this work is around helping all students find their place in the Duxbury Public Schools. So, and I, I don't know.
I, yeah, I was just going to add that, first off, I want to recognize Miss Shan for the amazing presentation she gave. I was, I actually sent her, and I was very impressed with how organized and well spoken she was. And I'm excited that she will be coming to our meetings to give an update and to share what she's doing with the school community. And just to kind of follow with what Kelly said, I wrote it down because I thought it was pretty, pretty, I guess, profound. But she just said the goal of it is like creating safe environments to create an ideal learning environment for the student. And I thought that was a good, you know, objective. And I'm excited about her website, which we got a little preview of, and I know that's going to go live soon. And she also spoke of some great things that I'm sure she's going to share with you because I don't want to watch any of it. So. But I do have another comment aside from the liaison group. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Were you done, Kelly?
I'm done.
Okay. I want to give a huge shout out to everyone, Mr. Donovan and the student junior class, student council, for the amazing job they did on prom. It was the first time I've ever seen the red carpet, and it was just magnificent. I was so excited for all the students to finally have some normalcy and just have a great time. And it was so perfectly run, that red carpet started with the five stalls coming down, and it was like 45 minutes, and it was like broken down and cleaned up. I was like, that was unbelievable. I watched the whole thing, and I was like, this is amazing. The whole thing was just so well-run and organized. So shout out to everybody involved. You did an amazing job. So, thank you. That's it.
That's awesome.
Katie, Laurel?
It's a love test.
Yeah, there's an athletic advisory. Athletic advisory.
I do have something else. I'm sorry.
It's like Columbo.
Yes, you reminded me. I wanted to thank Dr. Klingman and Jeff Maitland, because he's not French, Maitland, but he was concerned. We clarified. For going around the fields with me and really taking it seriously, and we're all on the same page, and really trying hard to get our fields to where we want them to be. And I want to thank our building and grounds crew, because they are really working their cows off, and it is not an easy job. And I just drove by the baseball field after I dropped my daughter off at the soccer field, and it was plow, or plows, not plows. No, no. I'm in the wrong season, but it was loaded and ready for the boys' game tonight. So, you know, I really appreciate the extra work they're doing to make sure the kids are taken care of. So, thank you. We found out a lot of information about the field. We've done a full investigation, being, me being new, Jeff Maitland being new, and Christine Anold, the facilities director, being new, about who does what field in town, who does the mowing, who does the mowing, who does the weed whacking. And so I think we have a good sense. And we also found out that some of the equipment that the town has to groom, the baseball infield and the softball infield has been broken so far this spring, and they were waiting for it to get repaired, and that's really important to get rid of any infield being, to make sure that's groomed. So we now have a full education on fields and lines and everything, so I'm in good shape.
Awesome.
Can I make one off the top of my head? I guess I can.
Of course.
So in today's clipper, there was, this just kind of speaks to the, the town and the budget. There was an article about how the town's losing funding for free police officers. So they're going to ask for money, you know, and with the salary plus the benefits plus the training, it's almost $100,000 per police officer. So when we talk about resources, which we talk about the budget a lot, and we're negotiating right now with the DTA, like, every single town department asks for money. So when I tell you we fight as hard as we can for the school budget, we do, but that's just an example where the police are going to fight for extra money for them. And the fire department had already fought to get new folks on. So to me, it was just sort of that constant reminder of the budget limitations in town.
For sure. Cool. All right. Good updates. All right. So shall we move on to unfinished business?
We should.
Just a chat. Okay. So unfinished business, we are going to, I'm going to make it my business to wrap up school mini goals today. Because I feel like we've been talking about them since we reorganized. But that's good.
No, it is good because it's thorough.
Yeah, it's healthy and to help the exercise. So just to give everyone like a high altitude review of how we did it. We worked individually to come up with ideas. Each school committee member worked individually to come up with ideas on what they thought would be productive goals for the school committee to do and accomplish in the 22, 23 school year. We went through that exercise, aggregated all that information, and then went through a second exercise to sort of find some common threads and stuff that, to each individual person, rose to the top as something that they could get behind. And that ended up being really productive because we came up with three themes. Those themes being related to budget, related to communication and partnerships with school councils, and related to overall communications, internal between the school committee members and the district, and external between the school committee and the community. So thanking guys for really helping pull that all information together. It was super, super helpful. I thought that it would be a good use of time so that we're not sort of standing on a ton of ceremony to, I took a, a crack at drafting out what the, sort of the formalized goals would look like. And sent it to you guys, but wanted you to be able to take a look at it. And I'm also happy to put it on the overhead. But as you, as you read through it, hopefully you'll see your own voice in this. The good news for me is that there were a number of commonalities that came from that aggregate list. So I tried to include and consolidate, I guess I should say, as much as possible to make the list manageable. And I'll also say that the exercise that we had worked on was the how and the measurables. The measurables were hard, I thought. You know what I mean? It's like, you know, one of the things was to create a budget and finance subcommittee. What's the measurable? There's a budget and finance subcommittee. So in the bullets, I, I tried to marry the two things. So, you know, the hows are distinct enough, I hope, that they're achievable, and we'll be able to sort of mark and tick those items off. I could have done full geek out and put deadlines on everything, but I'm not sure if we're there yet. So that might be something that we can, we can talk about.
Deadlines for the goals?
Yeah. Or deadlines for the, deadlines for the action items under the goals. You know what I mean? But that's something we can talk about. One last item is on the back half, on the backside, there's achieved. So I put something in room. And why is that in room? Because when I was writing, when I was consolidating everything and putting this sheet together, it just felt like there was something missing. And so I just took the, I just sort of pulled rank and said, I'm going to add one item. And so this, this you, you will not see in the collaborative document, but I wanted to be upfront and let you know that it's so it didn't look like I was trying to sort of sneak it in. But in this one, long story longer, it's to work to put together some site, some sort of artifact, and this falls under school councils. Some sort of artifact that will help community members understand who to get feedback to and who to ask questions to faster. So, you know, I always go back to that mistake I made in the first meeting, thinking that we should bring something up that was really a school council issue. It wasn't the parents' fault. I didn't know. Parents didn't know. Parent comes to me, I'm like, that sounds good. All of a sudden, we start going down the road. And if there were a roadmap, then I could have directed the parents to say, like, awesome question. You should go to your school council, the principal for that. So I was thinking that if we had just some sort of a one pager or something.
Just a visual?
Just a visual or something, so people could go to the right place. It might be, it might be helpful.
And for each school, so that people can focus on, I mean, like we were saying, across all schools. Again, I think dividing things out so that there's tool base helps parents open their attention where they are invested.
Absolutely.
I agree. Cool. So I, I want to open it up for discussion. Next steps. I mean, we could either, if, if anything is shouting out to you here that's missing or should be added, or maybe should be redacted. Maybe we talk about that now.
I guess my, and you touched on it, and this goes back to my chart the course, chart. What's it?
Charting the course.
Charting the course. My words. Charting the course. Charting, yes.
Charted.
The, the committee course. Help that.
Yeah.
And it said, try not to make goals that are checklist goals. Make them measurable. And I feel like we have a lot of checklist, which I do feel like this is our first tack at it. So going forward, or maybe as we progress into next year, we try and make it more measurable and really tie it into how it's going to impact the students. But I feel like this is a great first attempt at it, and as we have more action items, we really key in on making it more than just a checklist, more measurable student effort. And then the only other one that I was, actually two points, was the develop a business presentation template. I was on, under the budget goal. And I just was concerned that we might be creeping across the line a little bit. That was a concern. So that was the only one I was really concerned about. And under the school council goals, and this could go back to the more measurable. I would like to see each individual school council come up with some measurable goals that they want to achieve for the school year. And maybe that's where we can get the more measurable, student-driven goal that we, in conjunction with the school council's workforce. So that was my feedback.
That's a black line question. So what makes you say that you feel like the business presentation template might be overextending?
And it could be that I'm not understanding exactly what that means, but I would think that we would allow our business manager to develop that.
Okay. So can I explain why I was thinking that? Because I think, all right. So one of the things that I think had come out of the aggregate goals was a sort of a build, you would call it a build upon approach.
Yeah.
On presentations that sort of loop back to investment, student achievement.
Yes.
And, and so what my attempt to do was to make that a, a little bit less prescriptive. And to say, like, if we could work with the, with the new director of business and finance to ensure that presentations that are given to us include some of those characteristics that you described. So the way, so like an example might be, this will be a clumsy example, but an example might be like a, a head of the, you know, a head of the LA in secondary schools is giving us a presentation around, you know, ELA, English and Arts, and stuff like that. Would it be interesting to make part of that presentation include some stuff about like, you know, here's the investment that we've done so far on, on our program. This is what, you know, this is the, this has been the impact of the overall budget in that cost center. And, you know, in, in a hypothetical, we're thinking that we've seen some good results here. Here are the results. So we might want to ask you guys as the school committee to think about allocating additional investment because we're seeing some successes on that.
So this would be more of a template that we come up with as a group, which I'm thinking the liaison group, the subcommittee would come up with and provide that to the different groups when they're giving us a presentation to tie in. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And in partnership. Right. The subcommittee would ideally develop that in partnership, assuming Lisa, assuming we have a subcommittee and, and that people like participate. And I, my hope is that that would be part of that work.
And I'm okay with that because, I mean, I would take all those papers and have them for when we go over a budget meeting or something. So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. Lisa, do you have any questions or concerns with that?
I don't mean to throw you off.
Not at this time.
So let's.
I agree with the goal.
You're still open to the talking machine. Okay. All right, good. So anything from this side of the table or from this side of the table?
I just commented, Kristen mentioned the school councils having a goal. And so the school improvement plans are where those goals would fit in, because the school improvement plans are developed with the principal and the school council at each school. And we had talked earlier, I was thinking the same thing when I first read that. It was more about the budget presentation and the budget process. But it makes sense when you're thinking about it from any kind of program standpoint or curriculum standpoint, giving a better explanation to the school community and the school committee about some of the costs associated with our curriculum initiatives and purchases that we make. And there may not always be a major purchase or an investment in a program, but it's good for you to know where some of the funding is being allocated in each of our departments and content areas. So.
Yeah, for sure, because it, it actually ties pretty well, I think. I think anyway, into the communication goal. So one of the things we've talked about in our communication goal is to help create better public relations and advertising around the budgetary needs of the school. And I think we are empowered to do that if we have more optics into some of the specifics so that we can talk, you know, pretty articulately about like where the means are. But it's hard for us to do that if we can't, you know, sort of see it and see some tangible stuff around it.
And I, Chris and I agree with you because I, as I was looking even just, we have this much bigger packet that we were reviewing in advance of this more broken down consolidated version, which is great, by the way. Thank you. I, I think it, it feels like a lot of these are a little bit of check, checkboxes, but it's sort of like, we need to set up the structures so that then we have a strategic plan coming in, and you've got these components here. And my hope is that as we move into year two. Year two, the next year? The next full year, with some of these structures in place, we might better be able to, once we have a strategic plan, to kind of incorporate those ideas into here and have, really tie all of it together so that then you might be able to see where we have some things that might be measurable. Because I agree, it's sort of like we're operating in like a little bit of a, kind of, you know, man's land a little bit until we know what those kind of overarching, you know, picture pieces are to break down so that they're all tied together. And similarly, you know, with any of the school improvements, obviously those are going to be reliant on that strategic plan. So I'm hoping for more clarity as all of the puzzle pieces come together moving into the fall and really get going with some of this, the actual work that we're going to do.
And I think with the overarching goals too, I mean, they're, these aren't necessarily goals that evolve being measured in the way that we all think about measuring goals too. So I think we have to be that, and I'm looking forward to that. We're not going to have data necessarily that's, you know, like, so we got four out of five. We got, just to, just to think about the way we might think about using the word measure, we might have to think about ways to sort of define, like, literally how we measure. Because I don't think we're going to come out of this with necessarily data to show success in a certain way.
Yeah. And one of the, I agree. And I think, you know, one of the things that we could probably hold ourselves to account for is, you know, it's tough to see progress when you look at the minute hand. You can't really see it move. But if we were to, once a quarter, just allocate like five to 10 minutes, just looking over this document, to say that, you know, where, where are we? What else has come up that maybe we didn't see that we need to add, or, I think it would help to, to, you know, get, to provide some clarity and to understand whether there's been movement. So I'm looking forward to that. Did I make any room there?
Well, can we talk about the communication goals?
Yeah.
So it says, create community office hours, community forums. Angela similarly themed program that allows to a dialogue. So what is that? Is that for everyone? Because like, I, I don't get calls on school committee. And I, I know it's because I've been on for a long time, and people probably like, she, well, I don't know why they.
I probably.
I brought, well, from you. I mean, the public. But, you know, in talking to someone else, they're like, well, I hear from these people. And I, so, I mean, I want to hear from everybody. So I hope that means for all of us. Like, are we going to have a school committee community forum? So what does that look like in your?
Okay. So in, in my brain, I'm thinking that we, right now, institutionally, our communication is fairly limited to one-way communication. So one-way communication.
Well, yes and no, because we always have public comment that.
Yeah, but even if people came to public comment, that's one way. So like, we hear it, but we can't have a discussion.
Well, we can't anyway.
Well, I can answer the question.
Okay.
Okay. So, so we have one-way communication. So like, you have the community, you have public comment. Another one-way communication is email. So we'll be emailing, right? So what I was thinking, would it be interesting to think about vehicles that would allow for two-way communication that we can develop in such a way where we're all able to understand what two-way communication has happened by, by making it more institutionalized? So in the next meeting, I'm going to make a proposal to pilot a, a school committee office hours program. Wellesley does like a really good job at it. And essentially what they do is, I don't really want to go into it that much because we'll do it in the next meeting. We have a lot of time.
I thought we were going to assist me.
No, no, that's okay. But essentially, you would, you know, once, once a month, one to two school committee members would sign up for office hours. And it might be one hour, and there might be 15-minute slots, right? And so a community member could get on a signup Zoom and say, I want to talk to the school committee, have a discussion with the school committee in my 15-minute slot. And then they have a Zoom with one or two of us, whoever signed up. And that's two-way dialogue. So that way, we can ask questions too. They can give us feedback. We can provide clarification. We can ask follow-up questions. And one of the other things that I think that I'll like about it if we end up doing it is that the discussion doesn't just have to necessarily be limited to what the community member comes to us. That's obviously the focus of the conversation. But once we have a two-way dialogue with a community member, I don't think there's anything that prevents us from asking them an unrelated question, like a Columbo, before you go. Just before you go, what do you think of the budget? Have you, you know, have you talked with it? Just so we can start to, you know, create stronger relationships. And whoever does those, you know, whoever does an office hour for a particular month is totally free at the meeting to say, I had some really great conversations in my office hours at school committee meeting. And then we can all sort of, you know, do it. So it's just, it's a way to, to have two-way communication, you know, because of the realities of open meeting block, right? So that, so that was, it's just an idea that I think might help to bridge the gap that I think some community, community members would say they have. Because I go back to the superintendent focus groups when we were hiring, and, you know, one of the things that came up in every focus group that I attended, both of them, I should say, was, you know, communication. I don't feel like my voice is heard. And that's, you know, that always, whenever I hear like a community member say, I don't feel my voice is heard, I always want to kind of ask, why? Do you know any of it? So I think that we should, we should consider trying different vehicles that will help to sort of. that will help to sort of understand why people don't feel heard. It's hard to do that when communication is only one way.
So you think we should keep that in there? I think we could still do it without putting it in our goal. If we're going to approve the goals, because we haven't approved that we're going to do that. And I feel like it's going to be a longer conversation. Should we just take that one out?
Oh, yeah, that's a good, so be limited to two-way dialogue, like explore two-way dialogue. Explore two-way dialogue, that kind of sense to say, yeah, that's, I think that's there.
Okay, and then we can, if everyone's comfortable, we could approve these and then go from there.
Okay, yeah, that's a good, that's good. Yeah, that's great.
Matt, could you also reach out to what did Wellesley that you said?
Yeah.
And ask how they navigate some of that two-way conversations without violating open meeting law? Because speaking on behalf of a committee, when you're one-on-one, is it more geared towards having people come in, be able to listen to the concerns, if there's something to clarify that is that factual, that, oh, that's right on the website, I can show that to you. Or this is in the handbook, or I can bring that back to the committee as a topic, just so that we don't get into trouble with open meeting violations. I think it gets tricky just anytime you're having a conversation. But I think it's a really good idea in a way to have more authentic conversations with people that aren't always at the meeting, but I'd just be curious to hear how Wellesley navigates some of those challenging.
I think that's a great question. Yeah, for sure. Did you get that on out? Okay.
Do we need a motion?
So motion to approve the, can I entertain a motion to approve the the final or the 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 goal draft document as written with the change that Kristen suggested?
No, I have to ask one more question.
Yeah, sure.
For public facing budget document schedule, is that just basically going to be like a bullet of when of our meetings, like this is the first budget hearing, this is the second budget?
Yeah, so Laurel might be able, and not to put you on the spot, but this is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the hope is that it's not just about when the presentations are, the public presentations, but to help people understand the budget process as a whole. So budget development schedule meeting starting from when it starts internally, whatever things are done, and not that we're sharing the budget that you're sharing kind of process map.
So like in August, we meet with FinCom and.
Yeah, and but even back before that, you know, when when Danielle and 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 hopefully, again, if there is a subcommittee, that would be a component of that and how that can then be utilized to kind of be sharing information to the public. So not necess, I think the public meetings have always been published and people are aware of that, but just for people to understand the big picture and how it starts. People in the community, people in the buildings, you know, everyone to kind of understand the full process and how we get to where the public meetings are. I think right now that's a mystery, a mystery.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, that's good. Awesome. So can I have a motion to approve approved budget document with the changes that Kristen suggested?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. That sounds good. All right, so that's Yahtzee, that's five hundred. We're really five nothing now, conservative.
That's good.
We're still on side one, it's almost seven, we gotta get going. All right, so new business, ooh, this is exciting. First item, my new business is the CPAC Excellence Award. Who is?
Who's going to make me cry tonight? Mrs. Schultz, can you come up and join us?
So I'm very, very excited to give this award. Jen Mazer cannot be present tonight, so I get to give the award. I have a little something to read. First, I want to thank Jen Mazer, who's the chair of Duxbury CPAC, and Liz Kizlowski, who's the treasurer for all their hard work this year. So CPAC wants to thank the school committee for allowing them to present this award tonight. The Excellence in Education Award is different from other recognition programs, and that is designed to recognize an individual who exemplifies the practice of including and educating all students regardless of disability. Parents are asked to reflect on individuals who interact with their child every day and nominate the person that can and will make a lasting impact on them. Each year, we receive the CPAC, receive many heartfelt submissions, which makes it very difficult for the board to select one winner. This year, Duxbury CPAC, and I'm so excited that I get to do this, is very proud to announce that Mrs. Julie Schultz is this year's CPAC Education Award winner. Be thankful to all the individuals who submitted nominations. It is clear how our staff made such an impact on our children and families. So this nomination for Mrs. Julie Schultz was provided by a Duxbury middle school family. Julie is literally the best. She continuously continuously goes above and beyond in all aspects of our middle school journey with our child. She answers all of our questions, often responding late at night, when I know she, like the rest of us, have a million other things to worry about. Julie totally, truly makes us feel like we are the only family that she is working with this year, even though I know it is not true. Our child adores Julie and looks forward every day, I'm going to start better. It's so true. Every day, seeing her and working with her. Julie is an amazing listener and offers great feedback when either we or our children reach out with questions or concerns. Julie has been wonderful with guiding our child to become more confident in their learning and helping problem solve on their own. Julie is honest and straightforward, but always realistic in her approach. I truly wish we could keep Julie with us through middle school and high school. Julie is an amazing asset asset to the Duxbury school community and has become a part of our family in this short time. Thank you, and congratulations, Mrs. Julie Schultz. Yes? Where's yours? But there is no greater gift to an educator than this. This is like the ultimate, you know, like the most important thing to me is the connections that I made with families and their students, and this is the ultimate. To to hear that, especially from you, my love, means the world to me. So I just thank you from the bottom of my heart. Like this is, when I got this email, it just changed, it just changed my day, my week, my year, and my perspective on everything in that moment. So it means everything. Thank you.
Thank you. With a nicer background than all those water bottles.
I don't think we should continue. Congratulations, that's really special. Okay, so moving on. Something almost as emotional, the overnight field trip. For Duxbury, guys. So, Mrs. Schultz, would you like to come up and join us too?
Our two veteran travelers are coming up.
Aye.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So we are hopefully, with your permission, taking students to Europe again, to Germany. It was basically based on what Cass and I both did. So I teach the Holocaust genocide classes and Cass teaches Latin. So we kind of combined it, made a trip that focuses on a lot of those different things.
For a number of years, we've been doing separate trips and inviting them to combine it and work together.
Yeah.
And now that we're opening up again, we.
Right. So we've been, we've both been taking kids traveling for years. I've been doing it since Diana and my faculty back in the I mean, year, no, fifteen years ago, something like that, same thing with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've been doing it for a long time. It's, it's amazing to see students exposed to different cultures, different historical places. It's really important. I I've taken kids to Jackal two, you know, two times. I've taken kids to Auschwitz. And I know they're very difficult places to go, but it changes their perspective on a lot of things and it's, it's really really important. And to see the culture in the cities too, it's just, it's phenomenal.
It brings to life the things that we do in the classroom. It brings it to life for our students. They can see the aqueducts that they read about, the water systems that were so advanced, and the amphitheaters and you read. I'm excited this time. I've never been to Verona.
Yeah.
And Verona is on the, on our list, where of course Romeo Juliet fits place, but also my favorite poet, Catullus. He grew up there and his father, I was Caesar before his, you know, gain. So I'm looking forward to hopefully finding out where that all takes place.
And you do have fun too. There's actually two bike tours. The bike tour in Munich and a bike tour in Nice. Pretty great, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds amazing.
It does.
Want to know specifics or?
Well, I was going to open it up to the floor to see if anyone had any questions or.
Just number of students and grades.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
We're going to leave it up to seniors first, if they haven't had.
And students that we've had in the Holocaust, that have taken Holocaust class or Latin. So that's, that's our goal. And for every six students, we can take a teacher. So we have, if there were twenty-four, we have four teachers with us. And they, and the company covers that. Which is, they need it, they, you know, they want it. And we have full-time, they have, they supply full-time guys with us in together.
Guys who speak, a guy who speaks the language, is given twenty-four hours a day. And really does most of the problem solving that we wouldn't be able to handle or receive, they take care of for us. And if we're going with a company, I have never traveled before, but soon.
I have, no, they're wonderful.
Very wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I guess.
Can I just make a comment too? I think we talk a lot about equity and access. And I just, could you speak a little bit about fundraising opportunities? Because I think in the past, I don't, I just want to make sure that any student that wants to go has the opportunity to be able to fundraise as much as possible for the cost of the trip and to make sure that students that really want to go that aren't speaking up and asking for scholarships because sometimes people don't feel comfortable doing that, so.
Right, and what we, what we were doing before COVID, when we had this trip before and we got, the school committee approved it, and then COVID came and shut everything down, we had talked to Mr. Donovan about, about exactly about that. So we had always done bake sales and things like that, but it only, you know, it only raises so much money. So we had talked about doing a run, a race.
Yeah, a town race, which I would love to do.
That we, where you can raise a lot of money and that could actually help sponsor some of these kids.
The previous trips, the fundraising that we have done has not been at all enough to make it equitable. As I said, we did a Yankee Candle Sale and things like that, but nothing was more than looking to be spending money. But we would really like to make sure that it is equitable, fun.
Yeah, exactly, because again, they're expensive trips.
And Mr. Donovan does say he can raise a lot of money if we're bringing around here.
Yeah. That helps me, that's our goal. So and then, you know, there are all that, you know, we can ask the kids, you know, let's get, you know, let's get together. And you think, you help us think of ways to raise money. How much money do you want to raise?
Go make some tickets on me.
So this would be for, for April vacation?
Yes.
Next year. Do you, this is sort of out of left field, we've never done this before in my time, but do you think, do you think any of the students would be interested in coming and talking to us about this field trip after?
Absolutely.
That would help me a lot.
We did that years ago when I took kids to, it was Julia Adams, it was her son, they would come with me and he was the only boy with, with a bunch of girls.
I know how that feels.
It was great. I did make a deal with them, I did, spoke to the school committee about it.
Yeah.
It was pretty good, you know, that was, that was an amazing trip too.
Yeah.
They had been to Irish Woods and Jackal and Narburg and Berlin and that's amazing, yeah.
And some kids don't even travel into Boston that much and to see more of the world, expose to other things. They've come back, things have been like changing experiences. Now I know why I have to get a job and work.
Well, it's really important to note that's what I think of is that it all tied in so well, too. I know we're doing strategic planning again now, but you know, part of the strategic plan was just like excluding our students globally and to like outside of Duxbury and what better opportunity than to give it this way and to you know, really tie it into issues that have like tourism in our, in our town and stuff like this.
Yeah, it's funny, I took, I took kids to Ireland and Scotland and England a couple of years ago, right before COVID and that trip was like to see the the cities that weren't, well, I've done it in Prague was the same, but they they're so unspoiled in there. It's like they're going back into history and they're, they're so amazed that, you know, what these countries look like and the people, how they, people love where they live. And they love talking to local people. It's really, it's fascinating, eating local food, great.
Good for you guys to get to go to these places. Any other, any other questions? All right, so this is an action item, right?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the international field trip for April twenty twenty-three?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is such a positive meeting, which is good because it's going to be eight hours. All right, so now that we're cooking with gas, I think this is a beautiful time to start with the school improvement plans. So shall we, it's up to you guys.
We're used to both coming.
Let's do it, yeah. So welcome you guys. Do you want me to throw up the deck? Yeah, okay.
Hello, thanks for having us tonight. Thanks for coming. This is my Chandler School Council co-chair, Kim Lucky. She's going to be home tonight. Nice to put a face. So at Chandler, we have, we talked about our school improvement plan and how we brought up our goals at our last meeting last week. And as a committee, we decided to, that one area that we really wanted to focus on and highlight for you was our global and community connection. Thank you. So.
So we revamped this a little bit this year. In past years, there was a lot of opportunity for students to meet like eight o'clock in the morning before school, to do some helping hands work, but it wasn't necessarily equitable to the whole entire community. So a big revamp this year was to make sure that these projects were taking place during the school day and were available to all the students in a house hall of grades. So the first thing I started out this year was a goal for pediatric cancer. So raising money and awareness. And then for Thanksgiving, the preschool and kindergarten students participated in making placemats that were delivered to three locations in town. And the entire school community was involved by bringing in food donations for group entries. Right now, the whole school is participating in a project to benefit the Spanish main society. Another in-town project and all those kids, of course, love helping the animals.
Adopt a pet, apologize to all the parents.
Otis the cat.
So students are bringing in supplies to donate to the main society and first graders are making cloth blankets to donate as well. They're pretty cool to have something involved. And this year, since we are, got a few more weeks of school left, we're also planning a final event for the first graders. So also under the same pillar, I just wanted to kind of bring your attention to the fact that we've been working on discussing new playground structure.
Um, so also under the same pillar, I just wanted to kind of bring your attention to the fact that we've been working on, um, discussing new playground structures for Chandler and Alden, actually. And so this year, we have met several times in the Chandler committee, um, just to determine, you know, what we need to do. We've got, um, plans developed by the company that we're talking to and just find, you know, refine those plans with, um, advice from all the people on the committee, so it's teachers, our PE teachers, um, parents, we brought it to school council, EDF. Um, and then basically we've identified that next year is gonna start our sort of fundraiser year. So we can start thinking about, um, where those money sources will come later. So basically, you know, we've identified that next year, we're just gonna start thinking about how we can pull together funds from different spots to, um, to inform that for both, for both locations. And I'm all in.
No, that's all we have. So we're, I'm happy to.
I was just curious, the EDF was just here. Would that be something that you could get, a grant through the EDF? Well, we have to soak into EDF about, about the fact that we are doing this. So they're aware. So I don't know, we haven't had like formal conversations with them, but we have reached out to them to let them know that this is something that we're gonna be working on and sort of, you know, we're sort of thinking about it, that it is, um, sort of a community project because, you know, these playgrounds aren't just used by Chandler.
Yeah.
You know, every, both days on the weekends by everyone that's there for soccer field and people are there after school. So, you know, we're trying to really focus on this being a community project and not just a school-based project. So I think it's great.
Can I add to that? Because since Alden, we're, we're sort of involved that too. Um, just, it's been a little bit eye-opening as we've been getting into that planning process and thinking about fundraising. And I love your question about using the EDF. Yes, that would probably be like a small portion, like whatever, whatever you think a playground might cost, multiply it by like five hundred. They're, they're so incredibly expensive. Um, so, yeah, we're gonna need to look at a lot of different sources to be sure.
Hi, I'm also on the EDF, so. Um, I, I spoke with Sue McNeil about, you know, potentially submitting other than this sort of like over-handed grant to EDF, um, because I know this is gonna be a long process. Is to maybe, you know, pick out one or two, I don't know the playground, but maybe could then submit a grant to EDF. So it would be a little more concrete. Um, it would be a way for EDF to be able to say, this is what we purchased at this playground. Um, and I think that would help EDF with the approval process, um, because it would obviously be a more financing on those money and a little more accessible.
Okay, great.
And I think along these lines, I think it would be fun, like Duxbury Soccer, you know, because the field is right there. You know, is able to donate a piece of equipment or whatnot and you could, you know, I, I think that's a great approach to have people be able to do different things and kind of tie it into the trade. And those playgrounds are amazing. So I can only imagine. These are such a good.
Plans are exciting. So it was good.
Yeah, I'm excited. I might get to, we'll probably be playing with them by that point, but it's still exciting.
I know, it's one of those spinny things.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We need any playground, they can come back.
Yeah, I'm sure they will, but we're gonna branch all back. Is that?
I'm still young.
Uh, so I'm happy to answer questions about anything on my school improvement plan.
I have a couple, just, well, one's a question, one's a comment. Um, you mentioned that you're gonna be working on, um, new project-based learning. I didn't know if you had an example.
Yeah, so we have really been, um, in an exploration year this year, just trying to determine, you know, a grade level project, um, in lines of social studies for each grade level. We have a couple of pockets of teachers in the second-year teacher course who had, um, you know, first grade example was a writing project where, um, it was, you know, the teacher was having kids research and then they were writing and publishing a book on a certain topic of their choice. And they learned how to use, um, different digital tools to do that. And some kids, you know, they had a lot of choice in how they published the book. So some kids did it, um, you know, just by hand and drawing and then typed out and copied and pasted it quite literally to, to the book. And then others, I mean, school reader on the iPad. You know, some recorded their voices and, um, you know, they learned how to, with a research process. So that was a really great example. So we're trying to sort of, you know, generalize that for everybody, but, um, exploring the options is really part of that.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
And then I just noticed you've done, I wrote down tier three, um, you've done a lot of work with reading. Um, and I just wanted to say it's very commendable, just all of the effort put into.
Well, Sarah will, I'm a full supervisor and most of the hard work of teachers, so I really, um, I'm happy to give her the credit.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's under the, um, that, that's under the, the link where you said details here?
I believe that was for the reading initiative.
That was for reading initiative, okay. Yeah, cuz I was gonna echo, I guess it's for another initiative, but I was just gonna echo what Kelly said about what clearly was like a ton of effort and it's always uh, enlightening and illuminating for me to see that stuff because I am guilty, just like a ton of other parents, of sometimes just sort of convincing myself that the teacher's work is done, you know, in the morning, teaching, and then it's over. But like when I dove in and I looked at all of the, uh, the, the, what clearly came out of a ton of effort and research to choose particular books, to choose particular readings, to embed certain, you know, concepts into curriculum. It's kind of, it's kind of overwhelming to.
Well, I personally do make me honest.
Okay. So, uh, thank you. And that was, that was my comment, very similar to Kelly's. I do have a couple of questions and I don't know if you want me to ask them now or to wait until both of you guys are done?
Whatever you prefer.
Why? Okay, so, um, the PB, uh, so the project-based learning question. Um, so one question I have was, uh, on the uh, on the item where it says train all staff in preventing, recognizing, reacting responsibly to reports of abuse through darkness to light. You've got an evidence on PD time prior to the first day of school was dedicated to training all staff and stuff on that. So I was curious, um, where's, we see sometimes like a staff member starts mid-year, teacher starts mid-year. Uh, how does that sort of comport with the, how does that training schedule comport with someone who's coming in off pace? Like, do they get trained when they first come in or does it wait until like afterward?
I don't think we've had that this year that I can think of, but, um, I can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah.
So what we're looking at is for next year, when we have new staff who come on board who haven't been trained for our original training, we're looking at other opportunities. So whether that we release the teacher for two hours during the day and we're able to provide the, the training to all of the new staff who are on board. We've also provided it at different early release days for staff and we can continue to do that. And we'd also like to continue to expand the training. So we have trained, um, other faculty in, um, in, in addition to, we've offered it to the community and we'll be doing that again as well. So we've offered community training with our council.
Yeah.
So it's an ongoing process, but that's something just as when we implement any type of initiative, it is important to think of the new staff who haven't been trained. And it may not be that they're trained immediately when they are onboarded, but within the year that we, um, try to have them complete the full training.
And that is a good segue to my other question. So when you say the community members, like is that, um, what's the purpose of having a community member, uh, train on that program?
So we have, the community training is slightly different from the teacher training, but what that does is allows for conversations to happen and discussion to happen. And it gives insights for the community members to see what the teachers are being trained in and what, what we are looking for, what language is being used. Um, so it helps with transparency, it also helps with consistency, so that we're all using the same language.
Okay.
No, we have some parents this year that attended the training. Um, and so the darkness to light just really emphasizes that preventing childhood sexual abuse is, and it's a community, um, something that everyone needs to take part in. And it's really eye-opening for parents because it might just make parents think about, no, I never thought about having conversations with babies that are, or have family friends. And just some of the, some of the points that are brought up in the training are good for any parent or anyone. We, um, trained up for student union staff. This year we did magic dragon staff.
Yeah.
Um, so we tried to extend it to anyone, but certainly for parents, they really appreciate it coming in and most things for the training and participating.
That sounds incredible. That's great. Um, and then, uh, I'm sorry, I've got a couple more. So on the, uh, the tier two and the tier reading intervention structure. Um, so, uh, publish information for families on the Chandler website regarding assessment. Um, and you've also, you've also talked about like what looks to be on the evidence column, like some really good internal back and forth communication around what's happening. Street, you know, with tier two teaching, with tier two, tier three teaching. And I'm just wondering if you can, if you can speak to, um, in what cir, this is like my own curiosity, but in what's, what circumstances does a parent of a tier two or a tier three learner get informed about a specific learner's diagnostic assessment and stuff? Because it sounds like internally there's really good communication among the teachers and the staff around, okay, this was a diagnostic, this was the measurable, here's how we're gonna attack it. And can you speak to how like the parent gets optics into specific assessments and diagnostics?
So generally, um, you know, we give, we give our, um, universal screeners three times a year. And so if, uh, you know, the groups for tier two and tier three are fluid, so if there's a student who, um, qualified for tier two instruction and it's new, um, the classroom teacher would communicate with the parent and say, you know, this is what we're seeing and this, and your child is gonna get some reading support from the reading specialist. And that's really how we do it. It's, you know, one-to-one communication with the, um, with the parent. We have talked about at the elementary level, um, something that we're gonna look into next year is, is creating publishable reports, um, now that we have in a lit review on new data tool for parents. And so we're gonna customize reports that we send home to families because we do recognize that that's an area that we need to, we need to, um, beef up a little bit for people. So that's something that's coming.
That's great. Yeah. Totally important. That's great, yeah. Um, that was, oh, no. I'm sorry. Oh, uh, right. So on the program expansion, um, uh, the coaching days with TLA and the data and progress monitoring. I just think that's a great story and I don't have any advice except to say we, I think we can probably come up with ways to help tell that story on, um, on how teachers are being trained to help with differentiated instruction, you know? Cuz I, it just feels like a sin to like get your updates and to celebrate them and, you know, not to sort of think about ways in which we can help like teach the community at large how well we're doing. Sometimes we don't hear about like the good stuff. You know, maybe you'll hear about like, but why do I think that's fun? Anyway, you only hear about that. So I think there's a good story to tell there and I think we could work to sort of tell the, tell the story of the good work that you guys did. So thank you. And thank you for sitting on two, at least two, like EDF. Anything else?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure there is. Okay. Yeah.
But it's about handbook for each school. It's the same statement as maybe both. So I should just say so again.
Oh, would, would that be?
Yeah, I, I have, okay, I have any questions, but.
I think the, the decaf, um, that process, is that A, it's new, um, and B, the last line just states that like, if, if they're school-based documents, but they can be shared with parents if, upon request. But prior to that, it discusses students who don't qualify for IEPs or 504, so I have to assume that there's been conversation that that child is in need of some sort of intervention. So I guess my question is, at what point are, are parents involved in this and why did a document like this go public for?
Yeah, so it's, it's really like, if you think about a 504 being like a formal, um, legal document, or they have an accommodation plan, a, a, um, curriculum accommodation plan that we have internally, it's something that, you know, the teachers are doing because they recognize that a student can benefit from those accommodations. Um, we rec, very rarely will write one without informing the parent. It's just, um, it's just, that's the way it's kind of written on our, um, district website is that a, a decaf can be created without a parent, you know? Because as an internal document to say like, I'm gonna pass the student on to you next year and these are the things that are really beneficial to that student. Um, but it's generally kept for parenting, it's always about that sort of. It's very rare that we would write one and not include the parent.
I need to open on that too. Just, um, it, it's a way really for teachers to document what best practices they've been using. So, um, and, and like Erin was saying, pass it on to the next teacher. And oftentimes they do come out of, you know, not qualified, not qualified for special education, not having a, a health disability to qualify for 504 or something like that. Um, but it doesn't have to be that either. A teacher could write a, a decaf because they're providing all these, not combinations necessarily, but they're, they feel like they're, they're utilizing all their tools, right, in the general education setting and wanna document that for teachers.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah, and, and it's true. It's just we recognize that it wasn't captured in the handbook and we just wanted to put it in there to, to make sure people understood, understood that it was. Yeah, okay.
I just had one, um, question on the loss of time of preferred, I was sure that question.
Sure.
Loss of time of the preferred activity instead of just loss of recess. And as a mom, very, very active kid, I appreciate that it's not just automatically recessed. I don't know if that's always been the case, but, um, I'm very excited about that because I always cringed.
Yeah, and it's, it's not something that we like to, you know, like, like on a regular basis. And it's, you know, for something that is, you know, it has to be like a meaningful consequence or something that is, um, you know, a big deal for a student, but, um, but we just feel like, you know, we value recess, obviously added a second recess, we value, but, but need to be able to, you know, go out and burn up energy. And so sometimes, you know, that consequence isn't necessarily recessed, something else that's important to them, you know? We, we like to say, Chandler, you know, you need to have time to practice and how to do the story. And it's not necessarily just staying and sitting with the question.
I think about, I had a really interesting conversation with a neurologist and we were just saying that, you know, kids work so hard at being good all the time. And if they don't have their break time, they're not going to be able to perform at optimal level or recover from having that structured time where they were focused. So I always think like that recess is bad time for that, you know, break for kids or whatnot. So I think it's, it's, I'm glad that it's more options. But thank you, yes. Yeah, that jumped out at me too.
Yeah.
So, um, is it okay if I, um, call a little bit novel since we're talking about handbooks? Can I, can I, um, make some comments on both handbooks?
Yeah.
Okay. So first of all, um, they look great. And I was wondering if you guys could speak just for like two seconds about like what the process is for updating handbooks?
Sure. I mean, for, for me, one of my own, we write physical goals, it's like a teacher write teacher goals, you guys write school meeting goals. One of mine was to kind of rebook that and revise my whole handbook. So what I did this year is just went from start to finish and, and then presented, I'm kind of fast forwarding, but then presented their changes to our school council.
Uh huh.
So I share a copy of with them. I have a meeting. Please take a look. I've changed a lot of things, you know?
Yeah.
And then I took notes afterwards for you guys, which was all that, you know, that three pages of these were sort of the major changes.
The things that you did, yeah, similar to Evan's.
I haven't made, um, I didn't make any major changes because I did that a few years back, but, um, you know, mine are just obviously with, um, housekeeping things, dates and things like that, except for the additional language, but still goes to school council for, um, approval and, you know, for that.
We also take notes throughout the year, like there might be something that gets added almost by someone else, like, oh, we're gonna put in this statement about, um, or whatever. Um, like a decaf, for example, like, oh, we're gonna put in this submission by decaf. And then, so I'll take a note, like, make sure you add this to handbook. And I sort of have to run it doctorate of note.
Yeah.
You know, what I need to add to the handbook when it comes to the handbook provision.
Okay.
Yeah, that maybe I'm gonna get a little year.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna, uh, can I make a suggestion? I'm just gonna make a suggestion. And you don't have to do it because it's not your job to take our suggestions, but I'm gonna make it anyway. Because I come in with a, like, I think everyone comes into school committee with some biases. And so I have some biases, biases around like what I do when I'm on school. And, um, one of the things I noticed in the handbooks is that they're, uh, in addition to being very comprehensive and very helpful, um, I, I went through both of them because like I used to work in publishing. So it's like, I, I get like a job, I get my jobs out of reading stuff and like proofing and stuff. And so I went through both of them. And because I'm not an educator, I was able to read them really quickly. And so certain things jumped out to me based on like my experience. And a few of the things that I saw in both handbooks, I can almost guarantee would jump out to other people that are probably outside of the building and outside of the school council. So there is some like, like, so for example, um, I was reading in the, uh, special ed sections, there's some, there's, uh, vernacular that's used that didn't sound right to me. So I Google it. Oh, I'm not supposed to use that vernacular like anymore. You know what I mean? And so I was thinking, um, would it be interesting for all four principles, you guys are in the unfortunate position of being the first two, the other two are coming in next month. But would it be interesting to have like a, um, a repeatable process for, um, ensuring that the handbooks are accurate? Uh, and, uh, like are technically accurate, like editorially accurate? And that there's some consistency in tone and voice on all four of them. And so here's my suggestion. In addition to going over your own list and sharing with the school council, would it be easy to send your first draft after you go over it with school council and everyone approves like the changes? Would, would it be interesting? Would, would it be interesting to send, send it to Caitlin? And have Caitlin look at it and just read it? Because like, I'm sure there's some stuff like your use of pronouns, use of things where she would be like, oh, we should probably change that and make it consistent across all four handbooks. Would Heather be able to take a half hour and read a thirty-page handbook? And like look at things that would jump out to her based on her expertise? So you send it to some, and we call them in publishing, call them SMEs. You love that, that, S-M-E, subject matter experts. So you're a subject matter expert for special ed, Caitlin's a subject matter expert for DEI. And you can probably even have a couple more. I would say school committee is a good one. Because one of the things I noticed is that you guys do a good job of referencing policy. And because I'm a geek, I looked at some of the policies and like, oh my God, that policy's been outdated since 2015. And it's been updated and in, and in one case, the update to the policy from MASC that we haven't updated yet, right? Says that this handbook actually has to have more in it on this particular, like the actual handbook. So we could be the SME. So when it, so like, you know, when you make references to policy, send it to Kelly. She's the chair of, um, the policy subcommittee. And then we would go through it and look at policies and make sure that the policies are updated. Does that, does that make sense?
Sure.
So you send it to the SMEs, they go through it like right quick. And then what I would recommend is, uh, I, I guarantee for all four schools total, it would cost more than four hundred bucks. And that would be top end. Go to like Upwork or to Fiverr.com and just hire a freelance copy editor, what we call a copy editor. And the copy editor would go through all four second drafts that are now all technically accurate and make sure that all the grammar, everything and the voice and the tone are like all consistent. And you could even ask that contractor to say, hey, form, not the look, but format like what's called the A heads and the B heads and the bolts all consistently. Because we're hopeful that we're going to update the website in partnership with the town. And I think it would be awesome if you have these clean handbooks that were all formatted from the copy editor to give to like Mike, a Mike Woodford type guy who's like, sort of like the de facto webmaster. He'd be able to take them and put them all on the website tonight and search them. So now someone could come in and put, you know, something in and he'd be able to sort of like search them. So I, um, I brought some gifts. So Erin is, is here, you can just pass it down. And Chase is on the other one. So I just went through it. I don't want you to pay attention to like my mockups. But I just put a cover sheet that just articulated what I just suggested. And it might be like an interesting thing for you in the school council to sort of work on. Because, uh, it would be the whole subject matter.
Do you sleep at night?
No, not really. I, I do. I just don't watch much TV anymore. And like Ozark is going to take me like a year to watch.
I know. My husband's always freaking out because he wants to watch the end before we do talk about it.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So I hope I didn't overstep, but. Okay, cool. Anything else on the handbook? Probably not.
You got it, Shannon.
No, not yet. So you want to do your school improvement?
Sure.
I would love to.
Okay, cool. We can switch that up there.
Yeah, sure, sure.
It's interesting that you were talking about sort of the story of, um, the different sort of curriculum improvements we, we're doing. Because that's, I chose, um, the program expansion, um, pillar and it highlights some of those things that you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'm highlighting our two main goals, which were improved data-driven instruction practices and increase effective tier one reading instruction and create and implement new writing units in every grade. Um, what follows that is some of the, um, the, uh, action items that we expected to, um, get to during the year. So the first one provide coaching cycles and it kind of goes on. I don't need to read the, uh, the, uh, the whole slide to you. But I, what I do want to talk about is, is we had five dedicated reading coaching days. Uh, and those are just on there with the dates. Um, so during those, teachers observe, participate and reflect on their own small group, um, intermission practices, um, through that process. Um, we had four dedicated PD days and PD throughout those coaching cycles. Um, and topics in those included, uh, a couple of text complexity, vocabulary, high-frequency word instruction, phonics, and even awareness, um, all aligned with research, uh, best practices. Um, and specific PD to, um, progress load bridging gap that kind of need, uh, created. Um, and then in the other major goal, um, teachers worked last summer to, um, develop some new writing units and enhance the writing units, including, uh, common researches, writing prompts and rubrics. Um, the members of that team, uh, developed those units and then we implemented those this year. They have them this year. Um, so they created the units with, uh, consultants from TLA, which, um, Dr. Will Thompson mentioned TLA earlier. Um, the team ended in August and, um, incorporated work each month into, uh, the grade level meetings. And we've got further work scheduled and stuff, uh, continue that work and analyze the initiative. So that's my, uh, that's my highlighted area of my school review.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question on the writing units because you said it was more the teachers with the TLA develop the writing units. Is there a consistent thread or some kind of carryover coming in from Chandler? And then leaving Alden into, um, the middle school? So that there's consistency for the kids on techniques and programming?
Yeah, I mean, well, everything we do is standard fix. So we're, we're following those standards and a lot of kinds of standards wrap, you know, wrap around from, from grade to grade. And certainly we're working with the same consultants that, okay, TLA for our writing units, the Chandler and Alden.
Yeah, I think that's good clarification because one, a piece of feedback that I hear often is stuff where you just don't really have a, a good writing program, which is anecdotal. And I actually disagree because my kids are really good writers and what I see going on for middle school is incredible. But I didn't really see, like, a lot of work didn't come home from Alden. So I can't, like comparatively, I don't know. So I feel like it's being much more, um, structured or pointed now. I don't know how others feel about that.
No, I agree. I, and it's, that's more personal and anecdotal, but just like what my decision is.
So you see the cha, you see the change, how that kind of goes with the period of development. That's great. Um, it's definitely something that teachers have worked very hard at. And it's, I, I think most school districts get writing as a area of improvement. Um, and, uh, yeah, our teachers will work very hard on it.
Yeah, I mean, to just, um, add to that, uh, just like with, um, Mrs. Wiesenhain's, uh, the green initiative. I was looking at the respect curriculum and I was awestruck. I was like clicked in and I just saw all the work that was done to choose literature, choose books integrated into the curriculum. So, you know, same, just same thing.
So thanks, yeah. Again, a real credit for Mr. Goslin sitting behind me. He worked really hard with, um, with a team of teachers over the summer, do a lot of that work, which was, uh, which was cool. And then, and then implementing it this year has been, uh, has been interesting. Like this would bump in the road, but, uh, it, it's great. And then you probably read there about a little like supplementary library. We're also going to sort of add it on to the project and, uh, yeah, so we're excited about that work.
Yeah, it's awesome. Um, I had a question on it. So I noticed that some of the cues that, um, that you folks are taking are from a, it looked like a state document. It was like a social justice standards type document. And, um, obviously you were looking at your grades, but I was curious, does, do all the schools use that same resource to, to do the social justice? And do you, do you guys happen to know, and I'll ask next month, do you know if they do that in secondary schools too? Do they?
Yeah.
Do they do that? Okay. Um, all right, great. That's, that's good to know. I, I, um, I bring it up, well, that's okay. I'll bring it up next month to the, uh, to the secondary schools. There was a couple of things that, questions I had that I think that they could answer. Um, and same question, uh, Chase, that I have for Erin. Um, on a tier two, tier three instruction, internal communication looks pretty good. Are you sort of following the same line of thinking as Chandler in terms of, um, creating a little bit more, you know, direct awareness to the parents?
Yeah, we, we talked about it as an elementary team and there's been some, some, um, like newer reports that are for specific parent reports that are more detailed than some other things that we've used in the past. And yeah, that's, that's something we're looking to sort of come up with a regular schedule on published and like, not like a report card, but something more like that. That's like, uh, that's like, uh, something that's expected parents will receive.
Yeah.
So absolutely.
Yes.
And, yeah.
Can you, can that, can that be linked? Um, I'm just thinking as for access in terms of, can those reports be uploaded to Aspen?
We, 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 we started talking about that a little bit, like, huh, I wonder if we can do that. How will we do that? Is that something we, we, you know, have teachers send home with kids? No. And, and we just sort of went through this like brainstorm of like how we would, you know, or are we stuffing envelopes in the office? Or are we uploading to Aspen? And like, that's what we want to do.
I don't, I don't think that we can do that in Aspen because the Aspen work cards are directly built in Aspen. And the reports that we're talking about are Analytic Views. We would have to have like Analytic View talk to Aspen and that's, that's the struggle.
They're not PDF.
Well, I was gonna say, I only wonder, yeah, if we could batch make PDFs that we, then we in some way batch publish to Aspen, but now the stuff I don't know how to do.
Right, yeah.
I have ideas.
I don't believe it works that way, but I am also not an Aspen expert.
Aspen's like, oh, sixty-four. I can't figure it out.
I, it's a.
We have an Aspen data specialist that works on staff now. And Analytic View is a company that we've been working with since it kind of went into the education world because they're all, um, computer scientists that do all kinds of incredible work separately. And so we've been working with them since they started going into the education world. And they've been really responsive to what we need. And so there, we're finally getting the data dashboard so that teachers have real-time student data. So they can look up any student today to see exactly where they are, they in at-risk categories in any area. Let's see their NCAS scores. Okay, let's see, um, star reading, eye ready. But we also want there to be just at-a-glance reports that potentially could be a PDF that somehow may just be an additional document in Aspen where it's not necessarily like reading the scores through Aspen. But at least we'd be able to have the students carry that yearly, um, end of the year assessment data with them. And I think that Analytic View is, they're just a great company that we tell them that's what we need. And we have our data, Aspen data person that's working on it. I think that's definitely a goal that we can look at in the near future. Not right now. We're not there yet, but.
Yeah, and I don't imagine, I mean, realistically, I'm just thinking, it's not that you necessarily want every single data point. But the idea of the dashboard that you get them with the report, you know, just so it's all sort of there in front of you. And parent, teacher conferences or whatever. I mean, they show them now.
Right. And, and those are at slightly different, um, timelines.
Right.
You know, at least at Chandler, so we have two work cards.
Right.
Um, so we, you know, we'd have to work all those things up. Is that something that we're planning for the summer to roll out for next year?
Okay. And no? You guys, thank you so much.
I have one quick question, and this is more of like, I know, sorry. Um, as I'm thinking about this in, in the future and as we go forward and we have goals and, and the hope is to tie them, I sound like the person who tries to tie everything to dollars. That's not what I'm doing. What I'm curious about is whether there's an opportunity for the template Danielle. You know, the, the strategic plan is going to look quite different, is my understanding, with kind of action items and objectives and things. And whether or not there is a way for us to work smarter and harder and, and integrate budget components. And it's not that there's a dollar value attached, but if there is, um, to have that kind of integrated into your evidence of like, you know, this is something, I, I was thinking darkness to light. I'm thinking, well, how much does that cost? Is that a budget line item? Is that something? Because that's part of the story. Um, and I think it's important for the community to be aware, for us to be aware and understand when there's an investment in something that's tied to your approval plan, that's part of the strategic planning goals and how those all fit together. So again, not that there's going to be, uh, an easy way to do that for every situation. Um, but if and when there is, the more that we can try, try to integrate those pieces of information and communication so that it tells the whole story and the big picture, um, all along the way. I think the better I would feel able to do the work that we are responsible for doing. So just sort of plan that. Exactly, right, right. This idea of kind of the way that information is delivered and shared and how you get to think about it to help us tell the story. So for the future.
So all the support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda. We are cooking with gas. We actually might do a sub two in two hours. I'm very surprised, pleasantly surprised. Uh, the next item up for bid is the business and finance subcommittee proposal. And I'm going to put that in the capable hands of Ms. Laura.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So can I just start with the motion here?
Sure.
Can we just go right in there?
Make a motion.
Okay. Um, I'm going to move that the school committee create a standing budget planning and fiscal management subcommittee, which will then obviously involve creation of a policy that would guide and drive the work of that subcommittee. So that we can better achieve our goal around, I mean, the budget planning policies that is related to the school committee work that we do.
That's a big motion. Um, I'm going to actually, uh, if it's okay with you, may I amend the motion?
You may.
Okay, uh, because, no, because, uh, Kelly and I had a policy subcommittee meeting and we found that, um, we don't need to create a policy for this subcommittee. Yeah, so we have a standing subcommittee policy, so we're cool. So I'm going to amend the motion to read, I move that the school committee create a standing budget planning and fiscal management subcommittee.
Second.
All right. So, um, any, any, uh, any discussion? No, we're good?
Do you want to talk about it a little bit or just, it, it like, it just obviously is?
We might feel like we've talked about it. No, we can.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We need to vote on the handbook. So let me talk and let me, I gotta talk in reverse.
Yeah, that's, really, you're right.
All right. So, uh, can I have a motion to approve the, um, Alden, oh, excuse me, the Chandler school handbook, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Awesome. Beautiful. Motion passes. Five, nothing. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Alden school handbook?
Second?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Five, nothing. Congratulations. So sorry, we're going to make you stay here till ten. Yeah, you're good. Okay. And by the way, Mr. Goslin, he did take all the credit for it. I had talked to him before.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Danielle. Sorry about that. Uh, I was getting overly, uh, exuberant.
So, wait, yeah. No, just to reiterate for my brain processing. So this is the subcommittee that will, um, sort of filter to us information about like the budget and strategic plan and, um, just that.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Pretty much face value.
My hope is that it is integral to the budget goal that we've set for ourselves. And so I have, throughout this process, I've been sort of thinking of these two as really, this is really going to be a primary focus. The budget goal will be a primary focus of this subcommittee so that it can facilitate, but absolutely report out to the bigger committee as we move through that budget process. Um, but it will allow some more kind of hands-on work to be done, obviously not here.
Right.
With our director of finance. And ideally some, some community stakeholders, again, as part of the, the work is engagement and buying from people who, um, have the best interest in this process. As, as, as it relates to the town, we have our school committee budget liaison. Or, no, our finance committee, I'm sorry, the finance committee liaison.
Yes. Shannon got it.
Shannon got it.
Yeah.
And involving some of those individuals in, in the subcommittee work as well.
Great, thank you.
Um, any other discussion? Okay, so the question is, I move the school committee create a standing budget planning and fiscal management subcommittee. Uh, all those in favor? Hi, all right. But I'm really crappy at the voting. I don't like get the voting. It's just terrible. Like if I, I just break down. Congratulations. And so I think the chair of the, um, school committee appoints the chair and the member. So, um, Laura, you did such a wonderful job articulating that. I would like to appoint you as chair of the subcommittee on business and finance. Is that cool with you?
Cool with me.
Yeah, and, uh, since you're sitting right next to her, Katie, and I know you are, you know, just wonderfully sort of intertwined with the business and finance, uh, would you be willing to be the member?
Yeah.
Okay, congratulations, you guys. That's awesome. Yeah, there's, you might just clap. All right, so that's good.
Mike, we're, you're going to be soon wrapped.
Okay, so the next item of business is salary negotiations, subcommittee proposal. So I'm going to make a motion that the school committee create a standing subcommittee on salary and negotiations to replace the DTA subcommittee.
I second.
Okay, so just discussion. Uh, the only idea here is, it sort of gets back to that conversation I had with Scott, you know, the custodian. Um, we, we, you know, according to the, the, the responsibilities that we have, we are responsible to participate in collective bargaining. In the time that I've been here, I think we've done, you know, admirable job of participating in the collective bargaining with the Doug Sperre Teacher Association. Frankly speaking, if I can speak frankly, I think that the other collective bargaining that we approved has been sort of anecdotal. You know, I can't share what we talk about in executive session, but I would, we have been in executive sessions, I think you'll back me up, where we've made decisions to approve contracts for, you know, we've made decisions to approve contracts for not teachers, for other, you know, uh, units, and other units. And we've made decisions that are just based on anecdotal data. Oh, they're more interested in the insurance. They're more interested, you know what I mean? And there's just been nothing to, there's been no teeth, there's been nothing to back it up. So I just feel like we, it's it's kind of malpractice to not have uh, some accountability on our side to participate in that collective bargaining. Certainly, the DTA would be the most, you know, the most activity. But um, I just, I I feel like it makes sense to to play a more active role in collective bargaining with the other units. So that's why I want to do it.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a.
Okay, so uh, motion is to school, school, school committee to create a standing subcommittee on salary and negotiations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yatsi. Target. Okay, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, no, we already did the second.
We're gonna be.
The second, we discussed, and I repeat the motion, and I did a video of the video. And I don't even, all right.
Matt.
Yes.
Put a phone on that today.
Oh, see, yeah, okay, so um, I, I, thank you for asking. Would you like to be the chair of the salary negotiations subcommittee? That is so awesome. How are you doing?
Oh, I'm great.
Would you like to be the member?
Sure.
Okay, so it's gonna be Chair Kristen O'Connell and Kelly will be the member.
I love it, lady. This is very busy.
Yeah, it's just like, we are not, we are not fooling around here. Okay, school, school committee meeting calendar, um. Okay, so um, school committee meeting calendar. Uh, if you guys go to um, page, I put in a couple artifacts here. So on page seventy-six, I couldn't find a twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school meeting agenda calendar. Doesn't mean the one doesn't exist or that we didn't vote on one, but I just couldn't find it. So I wanted to just like, sort of show you what, how we usually do, and this predates everyone else's room, I think, on how we would do the uh, agenda calendars. Um, and so Danielle was awesome. She updated this artifact, which I did not include uh, on the proposed agenda topics for twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. However, what I thought would be um, perhaps more helpful would be to just sort of take a visual, just take sort of a visual look on this, on the spread. So um, you know, if you, if you take a look, so here's the first six months of our fiscal year, July to December. We obviously, we haven't been meeting in July and August, I'm not advocating for it. Uh, we do two meetings in September, two meetings in October, two meetings in November. We typically do one meeting in December. I want to point out to the group that um, what we've been doing so far and what we've been agreeing on on our goals is going to require more content to be covered in these meetings. Even if we were to have, you know, we have school councils, for example, give presentations quarterly. If we even have the DEF take ten or fifteen minutes to do quarterly updates. Uh, if we bring up our own proposals to the table to to do things, you know, we can't sort of make more time. So um, you know, I don't think that we should make a decision, like a hard ass decision right now, but I want to sort of alert people to the fact that um, you know, we we may be most likely adding more content than what we're seeing here, and that might require us to sort of think whether or not we like to. If you look at the um, the second, I, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. Sorry about that.
I got it.
That's cool. Did I break it?
No.
No, that's good. Okay, I I didn't, I didn't want to break anything. So here's the, here's the, this one's uh, uh, you know, here's the, here's the second six months. So we do one in Jan, one in February, one in March. And then we really stack some stuff in at the um, at the end uh, of the um, of the year. So I kind of don't know where to go with this besides just to sort of make the comment that.
Reason that there's only one in Jan, I'm just wondering like, where the balance there is that there.
Can I make a comment first?
Yeah.
So I feel like if we're doing more work in these subcommittees and with the school council, yes, there may be more, more presentations, but they should be more succinct presentations, yes, in my opinion, because the communication is constantly flowing, that we're not giving a huge presentation. Yeah, we're just kind of, I hope, build upon, well, building upon it each time they present it. So yes, they're coming three times, but it's going to be an update versus an entire thirty-minute presentation. So I'm actually less concerned about the length, like even if we have, you know, seven items, if they're each ten minutes or fifteen minutes, it should be fine. So that's, that's the way I'm looking at it versus more than, we need more meetings. I'm thinking we're going to be more productive in our meetings because of how we have it set up. Laura's question, typically June is such a busy month, and there's, there's years that school ends on June sixteenth. So you asked why there's only one meeting in June.
Well, January, February, March, and April, it looks like, if anyone, so I'm just wondering.
I think just generally the way that um, the calendars, and because by the time we get to January, when we have the budget hearing, it's, it's really kind of crunch time in the schools and everyone's just down to business and there's less school committee business that needs to take place because it's really busy from September to that budget hearing.
Right.
And then we're in preparation for town meeting. So there hasn't been a need for it, but for example, this year there was a need to have some additional school committee meetings based on some issue with the superintendent search. So I think that you, there were more than one, there were probably six meetings in January this year, so we add them as needed. But in general, we haven't had stacked full meetings in January, February, and March.
Yeah.
Um, we've been able to get through and have an appropriate length meeting with just one meeting a month.
Yeah, which is great. I mean, that's good. I just, I figured there was a reason. And the, and the only other question I would ask or um, hope that I would articulate is that as we look at these components and and we talk about this idea of a communications goal and two-way communications and having a website where a lot of stuff is shared, is that, I mean, this is a great opportunity for everybody to share highlights and things like that, but anything, my hope would be anything that's sort of like just information sharing, if there's a way for that to be, you know, documented and highlighted, but now that it's accessible for everyone, the entire community, um, maybe it's just a, uh, an acknowledgement of, you know, if you want to take a look at this in more detail, please go, you know, it's on the website to to review, as opposed to everyone having to give, you know, full-length presentations or updates on every individual thing that has been covered in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what buckets, you know, that would cover, but.
I think that's kind of what we did with the presentations with the school improvement plans, like we had access, we could read through them, we could ask any questions, but they highlighted the areas that were most important to the school. And I felt like the conversation, the questions that we had touched on the other areas that were, sorry, so I agree.
Yeah, this was one of the most succinct presentations on school improvement plan in a while. It's fabulous.
Yeah, that's good. And it's nice to see what they're most, like what their focus is most on.
Right. But we get to read everything.
Right, and as we do our own, right?
Yeah.
Right.
But like you said, you know, you want the public to know, this is the grade that the schools are doing, right, but then you can access the plans here.
I know where to find you. We'll have our meetings there.
That's what we said.
So did any, besides what I just sort of gave as a preamble, as you guys were reading through this before the meeting, did anything jump out at you as far as location of topics throughout the year? I mean, we can sort of probably have some flexibility. But you know, I, it's not a criticism, but I always sort of look at things a little bit harder sometimes when, when it's something as a template. You, you know what I mean? When you do send, you know, to your question, you, you know, like, why have we been doing this since January? There was like a valid answer for it. Sometimes the answer is, well, it's the way I've always been doing it. So I was, I, that always gets me curious, sort of about it. But I don't want to create problems where they don't exist. So if we're cool with this sort of placement of where things are throughout the year and the cadence and the number of meetings, I'm personally cool with it.
We're all very open to movement, so we just contact you with our concerns and we're open there. So yeah.
Yeah, I mean, when these goals are defined and we talk about, I mean, if we say that they're going to be quarterly check-ins or whatever it is that we talked about today, I mean, that would be to obviously be added into here.
Yeah.
To correspond to achieving the goals that we've now voted on.
Yeah.
And then the bunch, so.
Right, so this isn't set in stone, and so we'll work in wood, and so like.
It's a living document.
It's a living document. And I messed up the vote on, I messed up the motion. I didn't create the motion. So we talked about it, we thought, well, we can do that again. No, I'll just do the motion now. Does anyone have anything else they want to add to this?
I don't even know why we have to motion this.
It's, well, like, I, we don't have, oh, you mean, we don't, it's like, it is an action. I think we have to vote on it, don't we?
On our.
We have to vote to approve the calendar. Well, we typically do vote to approve the calendar.
To approve the calendar as a living document that may or may not change.
Well, typically, it's just a motion that I move to approve the calendar.
Okay.
It's, it's like Robert's rules, like whenever we.
I guess it's like, do we have one in there with dates?
Yeah, so, so that in the um, I, I didn't have one on the slide, but I have days and dates, so we would just fill them in. Did you want to talk to Danielle a little bit about the high level, like religious holiday stuff?
Oh, no, I understood all that.
Yeah.
So we do have dates um, for the, this is just for school committee.
Yeah, this is just a school committee.
Okay, and they're all in the packet that you have already given us. I believe they're in the packet with the one that I gave that had the date, correct, that has uh.
Did you have actual dates on them?
Yeah, I believe so.
Oh, then I'm, I'm sorry. I did you put it in the folder.
I did look over all the any dates. So I have um, yeah, if you wanted to display the, do you have the folder?
Is it in a shared folder?
I can take over, um, share for just a moment. It would be easier.
Is it in the main eighteen folder?
Yep. It's called five eighteen twenty-two underscore twenty-one, twenty, oh, this is the twenty twenty-one calendar.
Yeah.
That's the one that we have the date, yeah.
So that's my bad. I put, I put the wrong one in because I didn't catch what I think you said.
I do have one with dates on it that I can open right now and say verbally, and I can explain, I mean, is that what we need to vote on?
Yeah, so like, if you want to just explain sort of the days and dates that changed from the normal Wednesdays, we can just make a vote.
There's only one.
Good group again. Is that cool?
You know what? I was just confused because there weren't actual dates.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why I, I mean, I'm.
I don't need to know them. If you're going to share them.
I'm, yeah, I don't need to know them.
Yeah, then does it really?
So it doesn't matter, but that's why I guess like, we have. So the dates that we have um, drafted for next year are similar, so it's September seventh and twenty-one. Um, October, we run into the Yom Kippur um, holiday, High Holiday, so we were proposing to work on Monday, October third, have our, one of our October meetings, if that was okay with the group, and then the second October meeting was the nineteenth. November second is our big FY twenty-four budget presentation, November sixteen, December seven, January fourth, February first, March eighth, April fifth, May third, May seventeenth, June seventh. So they were similar in calendar locations and the, to the meetings that were scheduled, the regularly scheduled meetings for this year.
The non-council.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll call it in.
We didn't know if Mondays are a no-go, um, in terms of if you have enough notice Monday evening for just that one meeting would be fine.
Which was the month, one of the March.
Yeah.
On October, or in October because of.
I'm, I'm good now.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. No problem. I just completely messed that one up. I guess it's like, I gotta go back to, I gotta go back to chair school. All right, so uh, I, uh, can I entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school committee meeting calendar?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yatsi, all right, so uh, woo, now we are going to the last agenda item, which is the uh, superintendent entry plan update. And so, I'm gonna throw this up on the overhead.
I'm going to share, um, maybe just one second, I can share for the viewers at home.
Yeah. Running off.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz, come over here.
Okay, great.
Mrs. Schultz. You're wonderful.
Oh, can she come carry me?
Yeah, I don't think she wants to.
Yeah.
Not that I want to speak for her.
Everyone's righted. I think she watches.
Yeah, yeah, she, she's probably, PJ's watching now. I had a giant meal before I came. Clandestine kitchen, it's my new best friend.
They do it right.
Yeah.
As I shared this presentation with you yesterday, we shared the whole, the full entry plan report with all of you ahead of the meeting, and we aren't going to go through all of the highlights, but just for anyone viewing at home, um, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents requires any first-year superintendent to participate in an induction program. And even though I was um, an interim to start the school year, um, they still want any interim superintendent to go through the program. And it's really important just because of the coaching support that you receive, and you've met my coach, Dr. Ruth Gilbert Whitner, um, who is also leading us through the strategic planning process. So I feel like the fact that both of those things are happening with Dr. um, Whitner are really helpful because she's seen consistent findings in terms of what our strategic planning committees are coming up with um, that, that Dr. Wilcox and I found on the um, as we gathered some data for the entry plan. And so both of us partnered to do this because um, Dr. Wilcox also had, it's her goal this year to complete an entry plan because she was truly new to Doug Sperry this year, and so it was important for her to just dive right in and familiarize herself with everything, contracts, um, budget, history, um, just all of our curriculum documents because she's working so closely with that.
So that's not a mandate for the assistant superintendent, but it was something that you guys took on after.
So we, we did, we, um, I was able to participate in the um, assistant superintendent's leadership seminar for um, this year and then also was working with a mentor and continuing to work with a mentor as well. So it was a nice balance between assembling meetings throughout the year and then also having somebody as a coach similar to Dr. Gilbert Whitner, who um, worked with me just to answer any specific questions regarding my role. And Mr. Katie also has a coach this year.
Well, with the same leadership seminar, but with Wilcox, this is a superintendent leadership seminar for, uh, certification is very similar. This is certification that that I require for my position, the superintendent's license, so same process.
So anytime you're working under a new license, whether you are a principal in your first year or whether you're an assistant superintendent in your first year, in order to get to professional licensure through DESI, you have to have documented that you've worked with a mentor and have a certain number of hours of mentoring. And you have to keep a log, and if you did something that is part of your licensure, you need to, you're basically saying to DESI when you go to apply for your professional license that, that you've done the prerequisite work for each of those licenses. So, um, as I said briefly, we went through a lot of different data together. Um, we have a lot of, um, when we talk about tier focus monitoring, we get audited and reviewed in pretty much every program year area, every couple of years. Special education, they look closely at everything, they pull student files randomly, and they'll say, do you want to see these particular students? And we have auditors that come in for a week at a time and just look at all of our data processes, procedures, handbooks, you name it. Our civil rights data collection um, is something that happens every other year. It's a huge job. We have a lot of documentation that we went through, and we met with all of the, we met the PTA, PTO, CPAC, Chandler faculty, Alden faculty, DMS faculty, and DHS faculty, and we asked them the same three questions. What were they? So we asked, what are you most proud about? Proud about, um, if you could change something, what would that be? And then also, how would you describe the culture in this school district? And I think we were both talking that those discussions were some of the most valuable information that we had gotten, and it was really nice to just speak with the students, it was nice to speak with the teachers, and really just have some honest conversations about what they were noticing, where they really felt they were proud in, in what they were doing, and then also some areas of growth and, and where we can improve, and also the culture and, and what they were seeing as our culture and where they would like to, um, you know, what they were proud of within the culture and continue, but also some, some small changes with that as well.
Any surprises?
I just think it's such amazing time well spent when you're able to have people that voluntarily come talk to you. We had teachers that arrived at seven-thirty in the morning at the middle school and high school to meet with us. Um, and we had people, we had almost the whole Alden faculty that stayed after school one day on their own, just to provide feedback. We met with Chandler before school. We love meeting with the students, so we get, we get lots of feedback from the students when we have our advisory group. But we also had a separate group of students that came to talk to us about um, our entry plan feedback. Um, I think you learn something new every single time you have a conversation with people, um, whether it's just a parent that you have a meeting with or even just like when Katie and I had a chance to talk this week when we meet, it's just like, those relationships are where you really find out how people are feeling, what their concerns are and where they're coming from. Um, and the relationship is just at the heart of every single thing we do in school, between students and between all of us. Um, and we have many different stakeholders that we have relationships with, whether it's people that work for the town, whether it's our parent group, whether it's the police department, all of our students. So we have so many people that we interact with, and it's just valuable, anytime you can take a minute and just have a, just a good hearty conversation about what's working and what, where we could have some improvement. Overall, our, our student assessment data, I know we talk a lot about areas that we really need to focus on, but. But generally speaking, from a large overview, bird's eye view, looking at our, our test scores, we do really well here in Ducksbury. And I don't think it's any surprise, given, um, the students that we have coming to school. We have super engaged parents in this community that care about their kids' education. They want to see them do well. We, we have parents that really support the work that the teachers are doing. And I was saying that, I think it was me and Katie, that every year at the end of the year, when I talk to the teachers, um, how was your year? Was it a hard year? You were exhausted? And every single time I talk to a teacher, they say, I have the best class I've ever had this year. Every single parent reached out and said thank you to me at the end of the year. So I hear that so many times that I know that sometimes when people are coming with concerns, you start to feel like, oh my gosh, there's so much that we need to fix and work on. But generally speaking, I think that we have really amazing teachers here in this district and everyone is working really hard for the good of the students. Um, our scores have been steady. Um, when we look at the benchmark testing that we do, certainly in the fall and, um, the winter benchmarks, we probably have, um, more students that are in the at-risk range. But globally, when we look at scores from past years, over ninety percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations by the spring benchmark testing, which is really great. We focus so much on that ten percent or that fifteen percent of students who may still be at risk, but generally, our students are performing really well. There was only a slight decline in math scores in our fall benchmark testing after the, um, interruption, interrupted school years and with the pandemic. And so I think that we knew that math is just not a skill that students can learn from home. They really need that in-person instruction with their trained instructors and not us as parents saying, well, this is how I learned it in school and I don't want to teach you the wrong way. And everyone's really hesitant. So, um, I think that we've seen really strong gains in math this year, getting kids back into the typical routine. MCAS testing, we're consistently above, um, state average in all of our, um, testing every grade. And our students with disabilities subgroup, we talk a lot about, um, improving our special education experience. But, um, when we look at the students with disability subgroup at the state level and then the Ducksbury student with disability, we're outperforming that students with disability subgroup in every grade level and every area. So we definitely want to close that gap of any of our students with disabilities not performing and meeting or exceeding expectations. That's always our focus, but we are doing well in those areas. And our English learners, although we're a low incidence district in terms of how many English learners we have, they make really strong progress and they do test out of the program more, um, efficiently than in other school districts because we're able to give them strong support. Budget trends are no surprise to any of you. Um, we know our historical, um, operating budget increases have been below three percent for the last ten years at least. We know that it takes three to five percent in annual, annual operating cost increases to be able to sustain our services. Um, this year, we received four point oh two percent, which is great, but we really need to find ways to continue that trend moving forward, working collaboratively with the town. I think that the underfunding has had an impact on our ability to perform, um, the level of service that we are able to offer in some areas. We certainly don't want to be one of the only communities in the state that's still charging for full-day kindergarten, that still has considerable user fees. I know we talk about some of the athletic fees and the equity between different sports. And do all of our students really have access to every sport? We all know sports teams, um, and travel opportunities. I think we look at equity there, but, um, the curriculum, um, curriculum resources, I think that, um, we have strong curriculum resources, but the underfunding has had an impact on us overall. And I think we always have to go back to, this community doesn't consider itself to be average. And so the expectations, expectations are really high here. I think that parents have high expectations for their students. They have high expectations for the teachers and the responsiveness of the administrators. And people really enjoy having time with all of us to be able to talk to us about their thoughts and ideas. But, um, our fund group, our funding in the district is really average to low average. So I think we need to look at our, our expectations and our funding are not in line. Um, stakeholder feedback, if you want to do, absolutely. So our stakeholder feedback, this is what we really had as patterns that we saw when we went through and received the feedback from our stakeholders was that we have caring and invested teachers. And that came through in all of the, the groups that we met with is that our, our teachers really care about the students and they really want students to succeed. Students come to school ready to learn and our students are, um, you know, we are really proud of our students and, and what they're doing here each day. The parents are active and involved with their children's education. It is a collaborative environment. Um, and that we'd like to focus more on some vertical alignment, which is something that is also a common thing that we're seeing from our strategic planning. Um, we, the staff that we met with, um, really appreciated the time in, in having their input and, and just having a voice as part of the future planning. And we also heard that we need to ensure that concerns are brought to the attention of the teacher first and then through the appropriate channels. So the teachers really want to have the opportunity to communicate with families. They wanted to have the opportunity to talk to parents. And, um, sometimes it is an initial thought, if there is something that may be difficult, a difficult conversation that a parent may call, whether it's an assistant principal or somebody in the main office, rather than calling the teacher first. And while it may seem uncomfortable, really, the teacher wants that, um, conversation to happen with them. If there's something that they feel as though is, you know, not working or there's something that can be adjusted. Because really, our teachers are, they are, are the first line that is working with our students. And they're the ones that know the students and, and really want to have that open communication. The expectations can be difficult to manage. There's been a lot happening in addition to, um, additional demands that, you know, we have every day. So that's been difficult to manage. The high school schedule is certainly a priority. So looking at the high school schedule, um, and thinking creatively about that schedule. Increasing career pathways. So really looking at what are some alternatives that we can provide within the high school? How can we connect with the outside community and really look at what are some alternatives to, um, increasing those career pathways? And then an increased focus on academics was brought to us by the parents as well as improving special education collaboration. So that was brought to us by staff as well as me.
I find that interesting because through the last strategic plans cycle, attending the parent meetings, they were like, we need to have a little less focus on rigor and more on social emotional. So it's just funny how the pendulum is swinging back. It was more, you know, let's not worry just about academics, but so now the academics are coming back in.
And I think this year, as we come into our next school year, we'll, we'll see a focus, you know, if they're parallel pathways because we can't have one without the other. And so I do think we'll see the parallel pathways, the both, of the focus of both. We'll be looking at where are our students and where do we need to move them forward, but also acknowledging that some students are still, you know, coming to school with some social emotional needs that need to be met first. So.
Yeah, interesting. The way that you said that, I think maybe it's like that sort of the scales are tipped, right? So the pandemic happens, everybody sort of, before that was social emotional, we come out of that, you hear everyone in the surveys you guys sent about budget and where money should be spent. It's like, well, we want to focus on the social emotional needs because that seems to be what people are really feeling and experiencing. And then you hear about kids falling behind in academics and then there's this panic. So I, you know, it's like, how much of that is, is true? And, um, how much of it is kind of related to this balancing act of both? But I think the communication from the district should be, these are equally important. You can't hold them together. So, you know, maybe it's just time to recalibrate and figure out how to put those back, um, in line for the students to be successful, period.
I think that also when you, when you're having some social and emotional challenges and a little bit of anxiety, I think that what's really comforting and helpful for students is the structure and the expectations. And I think that because it's been such a, an uncertain couple of years where people have had unexpected times where their children are missing school. We didn't have remote options this year. We've had to switch to being super flexible for everybody. But I think we're even hearing from the students that they're craving those. We want to know the expectations. We want to get back to normal. We are ready. And so I think that the teachers are also ready to get back to trying to move more quickly and raising the expectations and being a little bit more strict. Nope, it's due tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Not being so understanding.
Yeah.
What we need with the way we have been. Overall, um, there was three key themes of information that came out of the, um, entry planning. And I feel like these really align well with what we're doing with, um, strategic planning. So, um, three key things were the district school and community culture and our core values, um, curriculum instruction assessment and special education. So really that instructional piece and fiscal systems, which is the budget.
And so fiscal systems means the budget doesn't mean like the technology that sort of we use around, like, that's, that's not what that.
No, not stop, not like our financial software.
Okay.
And so conclusions and recommendations. So we just have under each theme just some conclusions, um, that we've come to. And I, it's just, it's great to be able to process all of this with Dr. Whitner too, because these are things that we're seeing coming out of our feedback, um, from our surveys, the strategic planning surveys. And we've got, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the, um, strategic planning group as well as from the community survey. Revisiting the mission statement, values, vision and short-term goals of the school district in the next iteration of the strategic planning. I think it's great timing. Find ways to amplify the voice and impact of our PTA's, PTO's and school council. Increasing the engagement of our special education parent advisory council in an effort to improve communication, offer support and bring together our special education community in a positive way. Examining communication efforts. This is something Matt and I talk a lot about, just focusing on, um, providing the most current and essential information. And it should be, communication should be consistent from school, school to school. But I think we also have to look at, um, the next bullet, which is create, creative ways to engage parents. I don't think that we can continue to do the same events, the same way we've always done them. The world is different now. And if we're having low turnout, I really don't think it's because people don't care or they're not interested. I just think people are so busy, they have to figure out what they can get to and what they can't. And so that means missing that personal connection of having parents at, um, course selection might. Because we get hundreds more parents if they came if it was a Zoom meeting, we might have to look at, you know, some of these meetings might be better on Zoom because we'll get better turnout, even though we're missing that personal connection and we're willing to meet with people in person. Um, I think that we have to be creative with how we move forward and looking at what people want now that it's twenty, two thousand twenty-two.
Yes.
Um, we know we need to focus on building trust, positive relationships and a culture of respect in our community. And just communication wise and, um, culture wise, we threw on, update the school district website on this page too. Because I think that's where people do go for a lot of information.
Sure.
Instruction assessment for special education. So we're really looking at school improvement plans to continue to have specific data-driven and actionable steps to really focus on student learning outcomes. Continue focus on differentiated instruction for all students and really looking at the instruction of, um, how the instruction across the board. And that's something else that is consistent with our strategic planning. Continue prioritization of reading instruction. And I would say that with reading instruction also comes writing instruction. And so that is reciprocal in, in how we look at that as well. An increased project-based learning option for all students. And we did hear tonight from the Chandler, um, presentation about project-based learning experiences as well as providing real-world learning opportunities. And that also relates to our career pathways, um, goals and looking at expanding some career pathways as well. Enhanced opportunities for general education teachers to access student assessment data. So looking at how do we communicate with, um, within our schools with student data and what are we looking at? And then also, what are we doing with that data? So how does it inform our instruction? And what are we spending our time assessing? And then how are we using that? And are we doing that efficiently? Providing alternative college and career pathways for students. Enhancing our special education resources and specialized instruction. And while our special education program is in compliance, we want to focus on improved team collaboration, communication and supporting staff and examining instructional options for those who need to. Okay, and finally fiscal systems. As always, we want to look closely on a yearly basis at all of our district's spending, especially as we enter the, the FY twenty-four budget process is really right around the corner. I feel like as soon as the school year ends, we kind of get into the following years FY fiscal year budget. We want to make sure that we don't have redundancies and that all of our FTEs are essential and necessary to operate the district and meet the instructional needs of students. So we always want to start with a zero-based budgeting approach and really look at what curriculum programs are we using? Is our staffing appropriate? Can we move staff in a more efficient way? And I think we're always open to really looking at that. Um, we always want to do financial audits, especially in the areas of high-cost areas like transportation, special education, athletics and maintenance costs. Um, I think in the next few years, we're really going to have to start having some conversations about Alden renovation projects and looking to the state to see if we can get on the list for the school building, mass school building authority to see if we can do a, a larger renovation here instead of kind of fixing things as they break. We always want to assess our school district safety and our facilities, that those needs are being met and that enhancements to school safety and facilities are prioritized and communicated and really planned for in our capital plan. And it's just essential for the school committee and for the superintendent to work in collaboration with the town department. Especially if we go through negotiations, we can't wait till negotiations to me having some conversations about, um, appropriate levels of funding for our schools and teacher contracts and instructional assistant contracts. We just need to make sure that, um, we're doing all of our budget planning enough. We're prioritizing our needs in a way that gives the town enough time to be able to prepare so that we're not saying surprise. In the FY twenty-four budget, we need a ten percent increase in level service and our services. We know that won't necessarily happen. But if we can better communicate our needs to be able to have a long-term plan, I think the town is better be able to, um, respond to our needs and plan accordingly. So that there's a little bit of a, a ramp to some of the increases in funding that we're looking for.
That's, I just, that's it.
Yeah, that's right.
That's great. Uh, so when, when do you, so how far are you into the, to the entry plan, like, literally, like, how many months are you in now?
Started doing it in July. So.
So you're almost done?
I'm almost done with, um, the entry plan report is still draft. I just have to fix a few more things in there. But I'll be working with my ment, my mentor and coach for the rest of the school year into all next school year as well.
Oh, that's great. She's awesome.
Ruth is really great. She's been a such a wonderful resource to me to be able to bounce things off of, um, this year. And she's so experienced. So I love having her. It's such a benefit for the district. Two of you working for us is pretty amazing. Yeah, that's great.
Any other questions or comments? I think it sounds really comprehensive and encouraging. I think it's great. Good. Okay, so, uh, next order of business is like, listen, you guys, this is the triumphant return. Woo! Of the second public comment. Who would like to begin? Matthew, would you like? No? Is, is, I, I'm gonna give it a little bit more time in case anyone's driving up to the.
I don't see any.
No, we don't see any. Okay. So with that, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, third, fourth, fifth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good meeting, you guys. Have a good night.